All right, Nick, whenever you're ready.
We wait, should we wait two minutes for 5:15 or we're good to go?
You should definitely wait till 5:15.
Out of curiosity, what happens at an official meeting if it starts before the officially noticed time? Because if you need to come in down?
Actually, we could probably do the call, the order, the roll call and those types of things. But if, because they're public meetings, if you don't, you start them too early, you could actually, you can create legal issues for yourself.
For us and for Brian.
It creates a minor annoyance for you. It takes a lot of work for me.
That's a good enough reason not to do it. Okay.
You get named, I have to draw papers.
I unmuted so you can hear me laughing. I was so excited to meet with you guys. I reached out and said to Tito to say I hadn't got any information for last week's meeting, thinking, you know, there was a first Monday in February last week, poor guy.
Well, we hit 5:15, so I think we'll start things off. Hello, everyone. Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Welcome to the February meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the city of Binghamton Cove. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it looks like we have more than four members on, but we'll verify that when we do roll call. So the first item on the agenda is roll call. Mario DeFolvio.
Here.
Paul O'Brien. Paul is not on yet. Joe D'Angelo.
Here.
Joe Jeets.
Here I am, Rocky Lake Heritage.
Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest. Looks like Manny's not on yet, and I'm here. So that's five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the January meeting minutes. But do you see any issues with our meeting minutes that were posted on Basecamp? See's any problems with those? We just need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
By Mario.
Nick, this is Chris. I'll second.
Second by Chris. All in favor. Mario?
Hi.
Paul? Oops, sorry, Paul's not here. Joe?
Yes.
Chris? Kelly?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. It's five yeses, zero opposeds. All right. Next item on our agenda. Secret determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. And commission members may then ask questions of the applicant. I'm sorry, we're, we don't have any secret determinations tonight. Sorry, that's my fault. We're, we're into public hearings for our one applicant on the agenda tonight. All right. So for public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you read what you're going to say, but we can't start till 5:25. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll read really slow. All right. So for public hearings, in this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we're reviewing your information. So it'd be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from our community members, from all community members interested in speaking tonight, public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliver. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving your name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that we will be calling in tonight in regard to a project, if you could please start off by telling us your name and address for our public records, that would be great. Since our meeting tonight is remote, the call in, if you want to speak about a project, will be 607-772-7028. That's 607-772-7028. And unfortunately, calls can't be queued. So if you do get a busy signal when you call in, if you could, please just wait a minute and try again. We're taking calls in the order that they're received and you should be able to get through in a minute or two, if you'd like to call in and get a busy signal.
Chairman, there are a few before we, we have, you can start. But if there are people listening or wish, who wish to participate by that, I mean, they can call now. At least the first person can be waiting in the queue rather than having to wait a minute or two once Mr. Al Paul's presentation is done.
All right. And Brian, you said since the advertisement was for 5:25, we should wait.
Yeah, because this is the public meeting. This is exactly where we have to start on time. So people, especially with this, because they may not tune in until right at 5:25.
Well, since we have a minute, just out of curiosity, what is the chance that we're going to be in person in our next meeting in March?
Uh, I haven't had been able to opportunity to really meet with the personnel department to determine what the regulations are at the moment. They're changing quite dramatically. There's a possibility will be a person. But I am not certain.
As far as you know, though, the, the governor hasn't extended the the restriction on public meetings any further, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Think we're gonna have to wait about four minutes for 5:25 to start our first public hearing. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about before, while we wait?
Manny is here.
Yeah, perfect. This is let the record, for the record, Manny Priest has, has arrived.
Oh, yeah.
Right, perfect. Did anybody guess the color of the Gatorade correctly? Put on the winning Super Bowl coaches head and win money in Vegas yesterday?
My buddy had a parlay with the Rams wedding and he guessed the Gatorade would be blue and did in fact win money. So good for him. Like any commercials from yesterday that stood out?
It's a good question. The I don't even know what it was an ad for, but the one with all the animals, the sloth, I guess it was Doritos commercial, right? The sloth eating a Dorito. It's someone I remember today, but.
Right. I mean, this, it's not that I liked the commercial. It's the one with the QR code on the, on the screen.
Oh, my gosh.
I didn't really understand what was going on for a while. So that's what just stuck in.
I just couldn't get over it.
It did go on unusually long. It seemed like it was a double commercial, but. But somebody's brilliant, right? Whoever came up with that, everyone's talking about it today.
My dog was particularly fascinated by the puppy bowl. You know, we could, we had to really turn it off for a while.
Did anybody become a millionaire overnight with cryptocurrency or? I guess we're all still here today, so probably not.
My clock shows 5:25. Count.
All right, here we go. All right. So our first and only public hearing tonight is for the applicant, Robin L. Paul. This is, the project address is 16 Riverside Drive. And this is a site plan review and special use permit to allow a home bed and breakfast containing four guest rooms in a single unit dwelling in the C5 neighborhood commercial district. Looks like Robin, are you on the call?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Just very quickly, I, I don't, I'm not sure if there's much to explain, but I've always kind of wanted to been, be in my own business as a small business person. And the opportunity with Airbnb becoming very popular. I've, you know, looked into that and it, it just, it seemed like an interesting thing that I wanted to pursue. Wasn't really aware that I needed to have special site plan review. And so here I am now asking, asking for that review and approval so that I, so that I might continue with, with the Airbnb in my home. I've, I've owned the home now for just over 17, 18 years. I've put a lot of time and effort into it and it's a spectacular showplace. And it's, it's nice to have other people enjoy it as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There are no changes that are going about. It is a five bedroom home, so there will be four bedrooms available. Yeah, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, fantastic. Just out of curiosity, how did you wind up in front of the planning board, planning commission for this?
Sure. So I got a notice in the mail saying that, that I needed to have a site plan approval because it hadn't been listed as a special use facility. I wasn't aware of that. Certainly if I had known that before getting started, I would have done that. But immediately acted and contacted, you know, code and then planning and submitted the paperwork and pictures and a site plan. So, yeah, I was notified and I responded.
Fantastic. And have you, you've already been using it as an Airbnb for a while or?
Yeah, for the last couple of years or so.
How's business?
It's very good. Yes, I've got about 25 stays this year alone. In fact, one wedding, which was kind of neat. The, the occupant said, geez, we're gonna have, we're gonna be having a wedding. They didn't tell me however that the wedding would be inside the house. So that was kind of interesting.
Whoa. And it sends in the application that you live in the house or?
I do.
Okay, so you're there. You're the person taking care of everything there.
Yes, yep. I'm, I'm sure as little as or as much as needed now to make sure that people have a good stay.
The officiant in the wedding, did they ask you to?
They did, but I did get, uh, did get to participate in the champagne toast. So that was a lot of fun.
All right. Anybody have any questions before we open the public hearing here, if there's anybody wants to call in?
This is Chris. No, no specific questions, but I didn't want to, I discussed this briefly at the last meeting when this first came up on the agenda. Well, I have no financial stake in this project and there's no conflict of interest. I just want to alert the, the commission that I do know Robin on a personal level. So he's not a stranger to me like other applicants that come before the board.
All right.
And likewise, I stated this at the previous meeting, but I do work with Robin and I know him on a personal basis, but it should not affect my decision. My only question is, do you have an official name for the Airbnb?
Oh, it's, it's listed as the McTie Mansion for, you know, the family that built, that built the place in 1901. And they were the warehouse grocers in town.
Very cool.
Nick, this is Joe. Hi, just one question on the project is the, do the rooms have all rooms with the appropriate smoke detectors and lighted exit signs? And all, all the, all the things you would go, fire extinguishers, all, all the safety things that the fire marshal might consider?
So I'm not sure what's required there. I do have smoke detectors throughout the house. I do have fire extinguishers in the house. I guess I would have to do some research there. I'm not sure what is required, but certainly willing to comply with that, whatever's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My only question, I, I'd like to comment that in an area where there's a lot of student housing, this is a very nice alternative. It gives some diversity to the neighborhood with bed and breakfast.
Yeah, this is great. All right. Well, let's do this. Let's open the public hearing and see if anybody calls in about the project and then we'll check back in. All right. So this is the public hearing for the applicant, Robin L. Paul. The project address is 16 Riverside Drive. And this is a site plan review and special use permit to allow a home bed and breakfast containing four guest rooms in a single unit dwelling in the C5 neighborhood commercial district. If anybody would like to call in to comment, the number is 607-772-7028. And if there's anybody on the Zoom call who wants to talk, if you can use the raise hand function, we'll, we'll acknowledge you and let you talk. Do you see if anybody calls in?
Obed, has anybody called in?
No, sir. And no attendees on Zoom.
I think since we've received no phone calls and nobody's raised their hand, we'll close the public hearing for the project. All right. Anyone have any last comments, questions, concerns? There's none. I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review and special use permit have been made.
I second that.
Right, seconded by Kelly. All in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Can man?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, can I also ask, I know that the staff report says it's a type two, but generally I ask there be a motion declaring it a type two. It should have occurred before the regular vote, but I believe it can occur after as well.
I, I think we did that at the last meeting, right?
I wasn't there, so that's very well possible.
Yeah.
Yes, you did. Very good. Then move on then. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm also a yes for this. So that's six in favor, zero opposeds. All right. Well, that's an approval. So Robin, good luck with your bed and breakfast.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. So that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. And now we're on to other business. And we've got one item under other business. This is 159 and a half North Griswold Street billboard recommendation. All right. Is there anybody from Park Outdoor on the call tonight?
This, this is Paul Simonette, 26 Applewood Lane in Dryden, New York, and I work for Park Outdoor.
Fantastic. All right. What, uh, what are you guys thinking about doing?
Well, first and foremost, thank you for allowing me to be on. And this is a very different configuration after a number of meetings with you in the past. So I kind of miss smiling faces, but I see these little boxes on, on the right. We just, there will be others present that will have their perspective on this. But a number of years ago, when I-81 was expanded, the city and the DOT and Park Outdoor tried to be proactive in getting our signs further away from the right of way as they were expanded. So we worked in concert. The state streamlined the approach, the city approved the relocation. And then Park Outdoor was able to move about three or four signs away from the right of way so that it could be widened. We asked the right questions at that time about change in, in grade because we wanted the sign to be visible. And we got the appropriate response, you know, you know, X amount of feet and we planned accordingly. Well, fast forward, what wasn't on those original drawings were the noise barriers and they were unilaterally put up. And so we thought we had to work with mentality with the DOT and approach them again. And we thought we were at a working rapport with them. And we thought we'd get some relief financially. So in the March of 2020 timeframe, again, the, this, we approached the city to raise the signs so that they could be visible and got those approvals along with a, one of the faces being digitized, a digital sign. And, and that was approved. And we waited for relief that ultimately didn't come. And it's now in the hands of people with a higher pay grade than mine. So in the meantime, we feel like we don't, the, the financial burden required to raise the three locations on our own is prohibitive. And yet we do have room for one digital sign that is on the 159 and a half North Griswold. And we already have in place one digital facing eastbound or southbound traffic. And we'd like to back that other side up and put a digital on that virtually identical to the one that's west, eastbound. There would be no change in the structure. The weight is fine. And all we would do is replace the static sign with a digital sign, all the electricals in place. You know, the internet's already in place. So it really seems to be the best way of making the best out of what we have there. So that is our request and hopefully that meets with your approval. If there's any question, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Nick, I've got a question. This is Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Um, actually, this is not really so much directed to Paul. This is more directed to either Brian or Obed or Tito. Um, so I don't see this as being under a deliberation or a seeker. What? Are we supposed to be passing sort of resolution on this? Yay or nay?
I have, I'll talk to the address site. It's, it's under for recommendation. Under this, such billboards are technically prohibited under our statute unless they are approved by city council. City councils are required to come to the planning commission to get a recommendation of approval or disapproval or an approval with conditions from the planning commission before they act on it.
Okay.
So this is more almost like the lines of what you would do if there was a new zoning statute being proposed, where you review the proposal and give the, a recommendation to the, to the, to the city council.
Understood. Um, so Paul, let me just, just to make sure we're all clear on this. So currently at 159 and a half North Griswold, there is a billboard, a, we'll call it a short billboard that you want to turn into a, it's a short paper billboard. You want it turned into a tall electronic billboard?
Uh, no, it's actually, the structure is about 70 feet tall. And there are two sides to the, there are two face, sign faces, one facing east and one facing west. The one facing east is a static board and we changed that with vinyls. We have people climb up and take down what's there and put up a new message. And that's, we call that a static board.
Okay.
On the other side, that is a digital board and it's electronic. And it's, it's governed by New York State DOT requirements and FHWA requirements as far as how often it can change, how bright it is. It can't have any motion, you know, like a movie or anything like that. And it's highly regulated. And it's been in place since, I'm guessing in the middle of 2020, June or July. So our request is that what the city allowed us in, in that timeframe to do to one side, they'd allow us to do to the other side as well and replace the static board with a digital board.
Okay. So this is nothing about changing the, the current location at 159 and a half North Griswold is already tall enough to be above and beyond the, the surprise sound barriers?
That's correct. Thanks for asking that. This was the one structure that was not impacted negatively by the noise barriers because it was further west. And so the visibility, it's not really negatively impacted.
Understood. And just so that all of us on the planning commission have the background we need. When the eventual wrestling match between your bosses and the governor is finished about what's going to happen with the other three locations and the finance or remuneration, is the goal to then raise all three of those other locations to a, I'll call them a taller level so that all three are then above the surprise sound barriers? Or is the goal just to walk away with a big cash settlement?
That's a great question. I, I would anticipate. Well, I, you know what? I don't have an attorney available. Brian's the closest thing. I, I, I I'm, I'm not very hopeful. How's that?
That's fine.
Let me ask you a question. What are the three, this, you've referred to the three sign faces that have been affected by the sound barriers? What, where are they located?
Well, the only ones that have really been negatively impacted are when you're heading north on I-81 or west on 17, which are whatever your preference is. And it's only northbound. So it was as you're coming down the hill into the city, Broad Avenue is the first street and we have two signs that are on Broad Ave reading to I-81, ones that the Ones at the agway location and the others south of it on the railroad.
You wouldn't have your street addresses for those Broad Avenue locations if you want to pull that up on our Googles, do you?
She, uh. Sorry, I wouldn't have that at fingertip, but if it's helpful, you know what? If you give me a moment, I'm at home, so I can reach.
What is the clarification? Just for clarification, are those signs, signs, those three sign faces unused now, or are they just negatively impacted? I think is the phrase you were used.
They're negatively impacted.
So that means that they are, still have static signs, and they're just not as visible as you'd like?
Correct. Yeah. So our, our customers are not paying what they once did, that kind of thing. 145 Broad Street, if that helps. Now that the two signs that were negatively impacted, in addition, were 88 Bevieu Street and the 111 to 143 Broad Ave, which is a swath of railroad property.
Paul, my, my last question for you would just be, as you've worked with City Hall, the mayor's office, and now eventually with the city council is the next step. I, I guess the only reason I'm asking these questions about the other three is I just don't know if there's, if the city has rules about there being, for lack of a better phrasing, too many billboards, and I don't want to have you get caught. You know, with like, well, you got all this stuff to fix these other three billboards on Broad Ave and Bevieu Street, but that surprise, we don't want all these billboards. I'm not sure what your negotiations have been with the city, you know, since I'm just a member of the planning commission. I just want to make sure that was on your radar.
Okay, thank you. So far, I mean, we have interacted. I can't, you know, I don't know the, I've done this for a long time, and I always don't know the ground rules, and that's the truth. We have interacted with City Hall, and I don't, I don't think they would be collectively in a place of unduly withholding approval of this. So I have, I just get the feel that, you know, we're, we're going through the requirements, and certainly your opinion needs to be your own. But we're, we're comfortable with how we're being treated by the city historically.
All right. Well, we've recently had a considerable change in personnel on the planning commission. So back when I started on the planning commission, we had several presentations, so this is going back probably ten years ago at this point. And back then, much across the board, we were a, a commission that was against the billboards. There was a group that had been formed to make recommendations, and they've come up with a, basically a document, or they worked it into the zoning, that billboards were not desirable in the city, and they'd like to put a stop to any new ones. It didn't really address the existing ones, it didn't ask for them to be taken down. But that was their recommendation. And so for a while, a couple of years, any potential new billboards came up, and they were, the recommendation to city council was usually that. I don't remember whether city council followed that recommendation back then, but at least that's what the, the planning commission's recommendation usually was. And then, and then there was a change in a lot of the personnel on the planning commission. And the new members, kind of the whole opinion shifted. And I think probably for the last five years, I think in general, most of the recommendations have been for approval of anything that Park Outdoor has come to, to propose. With, with one, with one vote against it every time, and that was always me. And I, it got to the point where people asked me to stop talking about, about my reasons because they had already heard it. But since we do have a new group of people, I will just put my reasons out there again. I'm not putting this on anybody else. Everybody has their own reasons, but certainly I think it's new members, I'd be amiss if I didn't point out why I'm against the, the billboards. So specifically this, this one, and again, Paul, this is, has never been personal to you or Park Outdoor, it's just my view on billboards in general. So especially with the, the new digital boards. The regular boards were, you know, they're not great in my opinion, but the digital boards, I'm even more against. So there's, there's safety factors. I'm sure there's lots of, lots of information from the sign companies about safety. But the, it's becoming, as digital billboards become more and more prominent, studies about the distracted drivers with digital billboards. So digital billboards are specifically designed to be brighter, to be, to make it so that you can't avoid looking at them. That, I mean, that's what they're there for, to make you look at them. And there's a couple of studies now that are showing that younger and older drivers are more likely to spend as many as six seconds reading, perusing a digital board. And the DOT or traffic studies in the past have always recommended that no more than two seconds should be taken off of your, your driving, paying attention to driving. Any more than two seconds is considered distraction. So there's a bunch of different studies. I'm sure there's a bunch of counter-studies. That's just my opinion on the distracted driver. I don't think the digital boards are safe. The static boards, I think that argument was always not 100% solid, but in my opinion, switching to the digital boards where they're shifting what's on them every eight seconds, and they're specifically designed to be bright and unavoidable and catch your attention. This is, safety is certainly a factor for me. And then the other things, so we're already inundated with advertising 24/7 in our normal lives, our phones, our text messages, ads on TVs, anything we're watching, YouTube. I don't see a value in adding advertising to my life, especially with the digital boards being so focused on catching your attention as you're driving. You know, one of the, one of the cases for the digital boards has always been they, they can display amber alerts or important news. I don't buy into that only because we have a little pocket news source on us at all times where we would get that information. I trust it much more than, than a digital billboard driving by on the highway. And to be honest, we were on a trip not too long ago down in Philadelphia area, and there, there was an amber alert. And all of the digital boards that we drove by down there had nothing about the amber alert on them. So I question whether or not that's even a valid argument, that they would switch over to amber alert information in the case of an amber alert. And then, to me, billboards are a little tacky. No offense to Paul and his business, but I, I see them as putting a higher value on commercialism than the aesthetics of our city, especially our city for this, this particular location for the billboard. This particular billboard is one of the very first things you're going to see when you come down the hill into the city on I-81. I'm not super in favor of promoting that the first thing people see, a new visitor sees as they enter the city of Binghamton is the advertisement for Coors Light. Then the idea that this entire committee was created back when it was first made its recommendations, it made the recommendation that no new billboard should be erected. It allowed the ones that were there, I think that was part of the compromise, was that, you know, we, we've got quite a few billboards already, we don't really need a, a ton more. I don't see that anything has really changed since th- those recommendations were made. So it's another reason I'm against it. And then the last one is very specific to this particular project. If anybody has the Google map open right now, please look at where this billboard will be, and then look directly up the hill, up Bevieu Street, specifically Gaylord Street, Bigelow Street, portions of Bevieu Street. So if anybody has driven by that sign, the new digital sign that's on North Shore Drive, right near the stadium, man, oh man, is that thing bright and in your face as soon as it comes into view. This billboard along the side of I-81 is going to be very similar to the, that billboard, only it's, I, I'm not sure how many times bigger this one would be versus that one. I certainly wouldn't want to be looking out from my house on Bevieu Street, Gaylord Street, Bigelow Street, especially in the winter when there's no foliage to block the, the brightness of that sign. It, it's, the sign's visible from those, those streets. So I just recommend anybody take a look at a, a Google map. If you do the street view even, you can see where the sign is going to be in a couple of places along those streets up there. So anyway, those are my reasons against the digital signs and billboards. Again, it's something personal to Park Outdoor. It's just my take on it. I often think of driving down around Philadelphia, anywhere between like Harrisburg and Baltimore along those highways. And just the, the impression of being out in those streets and just being constantly inundated with billboard after billboard after billboard. It just feels gross to me. So I'd hate for that to become a thing in Binghamton. And so that's why my recommendation would be against it, but I'm just one person. I'm sorry that took so long, but I just thought it was appropriate to reiterate my concerns against the billboards, so. I'll leave it to everybody else to take up this discussion from here.
Would that allow me to respond?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. And first and foremost, I've never taken it personally, Nick. You and I, we smile and shake hands, and the last time we had a vote, you were the one person voting against it, and you were saying nothing personal, big smile on your face, and we shook hands and, and I'm wired that way as well, so it's not personal. So I do, you were very well prepared for this, so. I'm a little, I, I have to go with, of course, you expressed a lot of personal preference. And I can't argue someone's personal preference. There's nothing I can say to that. We're all entitled. I will take stronger issue with the safety issues that you said. In a former position, I use this as my example. I used to be on a national board with FHWA, and it was for construction work zone signs. The small ones that, you know, are reflecting in the, you know, a men working ahead type signs that are there up temporarily. And we spent $2 million on the font to see which font was the best font. I can't even tell you what the font is, but we spent the money. And so this, the technology for digital, safety-wise, has been vetted with hundreds of millions of dollars. And notwithstanding that, any New York State DOT permit that is issued, which would be required for this sign, has three sources of their ability to tell us to cease and desist. And that is, if it's too bright, and there's a statistical reasoning that says, gee, it's not safe, we can be, the permit can be pulled. If, so brightness is one. The motion or anything like that, it, that's another reason. There's a third one that's slipping my mind, but all in all, the, the, the state and the city have rights if there's anything that happens. We don't want to put up, you know, an unsafe sign. Who would? Who in their right mind would? So I, I really do want to take issue with it being a safety concern. That is not not, not true. It's not true in, in study. The only other one is you're comparing Philadelphia and other cities. I would invite you to look at the sign that is there. It's already there, you know, it's got the brightness, they're self-dimming. If it's a bright day out, the sign gets brighter to compete. If it gets dark out, it's like the candle in the night. It dulls down so that it isn't bright. It is not the same as an on-premise sign which has no regulations like that. An off-premise sign is highly regulated. So I would take issue with it being compared to just any sign. That's not true. And I, I would invite you, instead of looking at, you know, a picture or Google Earth or something, go drive it. Go drive it at night or day. It, it isn't, you know, I used to be on a planning board in my village. I don't want stupid stuff out here. And then finally, we can only put these up in so many places. If we were to put this one up, there will not be another one in that area at all. There's a spacing requirement, which is a safety issue. If you had 10 of these and everyone was different, and then they're all changing, it would look like Las Vegas and you would have accidents. So this would be the only sign in that area, one facing east, one facing west, and it meets all the requirements of DOT. So again, thanks your, your faithfulness in representing the other side. I wish you weren't so good at it, so. But that's, if you have any other questions, I'd be very happy to respond.
Anybody else want to talk about this?
Hey, this is Chris. I'm surely not as prepared as you are. I guess just generally, I, I guess I don't have concerns with, since we're not adding any additional faces. And I can understand there might be concerns if we're going to go from three billboards to six billboards or something, but all we're going to be doing in this case is recommending that we're changing from a static to a digital board, and I have no problem with that. You know, obviously, if, if there's something changing, they might add additional faces, we can revisit that, but with the current thing, I'm in favor of supporting a recommendation to allow them to go from static to electric.
Before you put a motion on the floor, can I ask one more question, Mr. Simonette? Mr. Simonette, I, I, my recollection is that you refer to these as the, the sheet size of the boards. Is there any difference in the square, in the sheet size or in the, the number of square feet from the existing face to the proposed digital face?
No, it should be identical because the frame that is behind it will be used for both the static and the digital, so it would not increase the actual square footage of the sign at all.
Okay. Do you have the square footage of what it will be?
I think it was 14 by 48.
672.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure that was part of the, part of the package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, there's also comments from the county. Wanting to read that or be those?
Actually, Obed, do you mind reading those?
Can you, can you see them?
Yes, there they are.
Do you need me to zoom in more?
No, that's, that's perfect. All right, so the Alright, so the, yeah, we did have comments from the two thirty-nine review. So the planning department has reviewed the above cited case, our two thousand nineteen comments were recommending denial of the static and digital billboard signs in this corridor still stand. Including the file. The requested signs are excessive and contrary to the purpose of the city sign regulations to protect and enhance the physical appearance of the city in part by encouraging appropriate design scale and placement of signs. Reducing sign clutter and distractions and instructions that may contribute to the traffic, to traffic accidents. And reduce hazards that may be caused by signs overhanging or protecting over public rights of life. Preserving scenic views and the visual character of neighborhoods, historic districts and parkland. Based on the previous effort, efforts of Broome County, City of Binghamton, New York State DOT and local stakeholders to develop a nominee nomination study for the Brandyline. Corridor Brownfield Opportunity Area, which includes the project area. A vision statement has been drafted, which identifies the Brandyline Corridor as an important gateway where the community seeks to promote high quality urban design. Permitting these signs would run contrary to this vision statement would add to the sign clutter along the Brandyline Corridor and adversely affect the community character. And last thing, the site plan for the proposed project should include photos of the existing east facing static sign and photo simulations of the proposed east facing digital sign viewed from the highway. And from the neighborhood allowed and proposed dimensions, structural and lighting details, locations of the other billboards in this corridor. In compliance with the enclosed New York State DOT comments requirements. Those are the Broome County two thirty-nine review comments.
May I respond to that, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Historically, I think Brian would Roger this as would perhaps Tito. In my over twenty years of experience, which is ending in June. I have never had Broome County recommend approval for any sign whatsoever, wherever. And that is just a fact of life and a way of life for me personally. And so notwithstanding their comments to those that are kind of new to the planning board. I know it sounds Broome County and it sounds huge. But again, historically, they have never approved, recommended approval of a sign and in my twenty plus years.
I will chime in that I do not recall them ever recommending a sign, but just for the new members. What that is, most of you probably know what a negative or recommended denial from the county means. It means that the agency that makes the final determination must do so by a super majority. Now you're giving a recommendation, which does not mean that you need a rec, that you need a super majority to make a recommendation, but when city council, the final decision maker on this. Makes a decision, they will have to do it by a super majority.
Alright. Anybody else want to? Discuss anything else about the same?
Mr. Judging, I think you had a motion you were making.
Oh, um, oh, sure. I will make a motion to. Give the pop, positive recommendation to the request for the one. What was this redress again? One fifty-nine and a half? Griswold Ave?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so a motion for approval or a recommendation to city council for approval. Of the digital billboard conversion to the digital billboard. Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, seconded by Manny. Alright. This one, you can just say yes or no, whichever way you're voting. Alright, Mario?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
If alone, no. Sorry to have wasted everyone's time again.
We respect you, Nick.
Alright, so that's five in favor, one opposed.
Yes, I will say anecdotally here, Nick, you've done a great job. I've seen you in other venues where I wasn't. I didn't have any ownership and you carry yourself very well, sir.
Well, thank you. Well, congratulations on retiring. Is that, is that what we read between the lines there?
Yes, sir, that is. So I'll miss you all, but. It's, it's been a great ride and thanks so much for your vote of confidence.
We'll have to do this all over again with the next person from Park Outdoor.
I'll be praying for him.
Alright, well, congratulations on retiring and we'll see you around.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, should I go ahead and leave?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, bye.
Alright, so that's all we have under other business. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
May I ask a question since I'm new?
Yeah.
So in a, in a situation like this, what, what happens if you want more time to think about something? Like you don't want to vote yes or no?
You can always Kelly request, you can always make a motion to table it.
Okay.
You're, that's, you always have the right to table any matter before you.
Okay, very good. So I felt like I was, I could make a conclusion today, but I just thought this is the first time that I, I thought maybe I, I, you know, this is where I was wondering about that. So thank you.
Tito, the only thing I would add to that is there are times though, when there are timelines put on when we have to make decisions, not so much on recommendations, but on applications. We don't act within sixty-two days of the seeker being determined, which is very, very rare because the seeker is always the second meeting.
Sure.
But if you read our statute, it's the sixty-two days for the application being first heard. There's case law out there that changed that so that it's sixty-two days from the date seekers decided. We almost always make our secret decision the exact same night we either approve or deny. But there are, so we never run afoul of that, but there are times when if you delay a vote too many times and on some big projects, Nick's probably seen one or two like that. Where it went on for three, four months. Then we have to ask the app, I make a practice of asking the applicant's consent to the German, because they always had the ability to extend that sixty-two days out by consenting. And, and, and I say it politely that we ask, but really what I tell them is you can either. Extend this out or they'll vote right now and say no. If you want an opportunity to get a yes vote, you should agree to extending this out.
Alright, well, thank you for the answer on that. I appreciate that.
Kelly, you can always ask for additional materials to make your.
Thank you. You know, this is the first time that this has been, and, and Nick, I appreciate all of your information on this. This is. This is why this is exciting to learn these things. You get to witness some of the changes in the, in the world we get to do.
And even if you think of something before a meeting happens, if you communicate to the planning department, they'll be very good about contacting the applicant and saying, listen. A member has asked for this information about this. That's generally. That and always, if you're at a secret stage, if there's anything you think you might need for the next month. Never be hesitate to speak up and let those applicants know. Most of them appreciate the fact, the last thing they want to have happen is when they get to their public hearing. All of a sudden, now there's some piece of information. I mean, it happens because sometimes the public brings up something or some, in their discussion, something comes up that you would have never thought about. But.
Yeah, sure thing. It's, it's funny how it seems sometimes so flat on paper and then the dynamics of a, of a board and a council. This is where it really is effective because you can see how these things really come into play. So. I think I'm learning I'll come up with some better questions ahead of time. I read everything I thought I was, I was prepared. So. You know, but then I had some thoughts, but you guys answered it all. Thank you all.
That's a great point too. Nobody should ever feel hesitant to, if they don't feel comfortable either making a vote or asking to, to delay a vote. Just bring it up. That's, that's what we're here for. Just we'll talk it out and see what happens.
Sure thing. Thank you, guys.
Any other, other business?
I believe Juliet isn't here today, but I believe the LWRP should be ready for review next week.
I'm sorry, um, as, as a non-planning professional, what, what did, what did that acronym stand for?
Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. Okay.
It's not. I don't want to use the word boring, but I can't think of another thing. This is one of the presentations that's at the end of the meeting that extends the meeting and it doesn't deal with the ballpark, deals with the river fronts. And what facing things towards the river. Is there any thought about actually? Maybe you having a special meeting just to consider that, because sometimes it's not a small document, you generally.
No, it's actually pretty extensive. I'll, I'll ask Juliet what she wants to do with the, and obviously whenever all the board members' schedule works out.
I mean, that's something for the board to consider. I'm, I'll show up whenever, but it. If it was a night like tonight where we had a relatively short agenda, I could see it being going very well. But if you've had five or six cases, then you get to that. I'm, I'd have a hard time putting all my efforts into doing the LWRP appropriately.
Good point.
The other question I would just ask generally is what, what are we, what are we going to be asked to do with this local waterfront development? Document? Are we, are we, are we asked to like recommend approval to the city council? Are we actually voting your name on something?
It would be another recommendation, Chris.
Okay.
It would be a recommendation, but it's a little bit more important because it actually is a document that you should take into consideration when you review projects that fall within the LWRP zones. Or, or the areas that are covered by the, by the plan.
Okay.
Just one general thought on that. This is Joe. When we looked at the baseball stadium. It was very thorough and a lot of good information. And then it goes to council and then it goes to others. And it'll be kind of the same thing here in the sense that we look at the waterfront plan. But I think if there was a way to come back to this group every so often saying, hey, you know, the. Baseball stadium that you spent a lot of time discussing, here's where we are. You know, the waterfront thing that you worked on the plan. Here's where it is. It's without looking for other sources of information. It's kind of when you approve items. You don't know if they ever actually got built or how it's moving or what the community thought. So.
Wait a minute, Joe. You don't want to just have this document collecting desk on Tito's, you know, desk? It's pretty all being undone?
No, it's good to see all this. These are great things we're working on and it would be great to know that they actually got built.
Planning department can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in both instances. The projects that are contained in these documents are sort of a wishlist of products, projects. Some of them may never come to fruition, but it's sort of a, a guiding plan for, we'd like to see this happen. And when it does happen, it may not be exactly the way it's described in the document, but. It's sort of like getting everybody on the same page and starting to march in the same direction. A lot of us continue to fund funding. And circumstances can change, but. It's sort of trying to get everything marching in the same direction. So there's, it's. I would not look at them as being projects that are done deals, but they are. A wishlist of products of what we would like to see ideally in those neighborhoods.
That, that is correct. From, from county as LWRP, you know. Kind of is, is like Brian said, a wishlist. It shows up budgets and kind of, you know, creates a path for. If and when the city would like to do these projects, you know, has a budget kind of set out and, you know, gives us a basis to, to do these projects.
The other thing that it does is that it makes us eligible for some kind of state grant, for certain state grants. Because we have the LWPD in place, you've done the homework already, so that they get a little bit of a fast track towards grant approval to make them actually happen.
Well, that's a good, good result.
Yes.
Alright. Well, I guess we'll just through emails, we'll see if, maybe we, do we have any idea how many? Items are going to be on the next meeting, the March meeting at this point?
Looks like so far just one secret determination. But that obviously could change.
So maybe if it's going to be, if it's continuing to look like it's going to be a short meeting. Then we just use, do it at the, the regular scheduled meeting and then if we get a bunch of applications or something, we'll talk about a separate.
Yep, if, if that's okay with the, all the members.
Sounds good.
Sure. Maybe, maybe the other thing I would, I would recommend to, to you an obit, if this is a longer document. If, to draw parallel with the baseball stadium district document, maybe getting that, well, as soon as it's ready, distributing that to the planning commission so we can. Spend a few additional days chewing on it, especially if it's going to be great bedtime reading as, as Brian has suggested.
We will get that out to you as soon as possible.
Excellent suggestion. Alright, well, unless anybody has anything else, I guess it's just a motion to adjourn from somebody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This is Joe.
Motion to adjourn by Joe?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kelly. All in favor? Just say yes.
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 Yes. Yeah. Alright, we'll see everyone in March.
See you on March.
Thank you.